Call to order the regular Board of Education meeting on September 12th, 2017. Pledge of诫 to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to two minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda for a future meeting.
We have just kicked off our official 30th, I'm sorry, Anderson Christ is the foundation slaying, I suppose. We have officially kicked off our 30th years. We're very excited. Two big events coming up. One this weekend, we're having our Hall of Fame event weekend Friday night on the patio at Hornet Stadium. Would love you all to come for some invitation where we are going to be inducting eight of our new Hall of Famers, which we're very excited about. And then Saturday night, we're having a banquet in their honor at the Commons. In October, October 13th is our big fall 30th celebration tailgating fair, so we're working very hard on that and hopefully you will all be able to make it. Just to recap, we have 38 corporate sponsors this year. We're setting that lofty goal of $300,000 and the good news is we're already 10% there. It has already come in, which is exciting. We have wonderful things that we're going to do this year with kind of a portfolio of initiatives from the district as well as of course teaching grants. So please come out on Friday night if you can to the Hall of Fame event. We'd love to see you and thank you so much.
Uh-oh.
We have a lot to say. No, we just want to publicly say how impressed we were with Clark Construction, with Rex and his team for getting Celine Middle School ready. It was unbelievable when I left on Friday, did not look like we were ready for kids. And Monday morning, the floors were sparkling, everything looked wonderful and I wish we could have video of those kids walking in and seeing some of those new spaces. They're so excited to learn and we're just so impressed with all the work that happened before that first day.
And Mark is here, so a nice round of applause for Mark and all of his work. Thank you, Mark. Paul, let's go.
Administration.
Just a rubric, I'd like to thank everyone involved with the kickoff event that events really took place the first couple of days and all of the staff who backed, a lot of our faculty and administration were involved in a PD Symposium Day that took place and then putting that together and I appreciate their support in doing that and really getting the year started off from an adult standpoint, really in the area we want to do. We did move our open houses at the elementary level to prior to school, so I know that kind of pushed the staff into their classrooms to get ready to go. We've had a lot of positive feedback about that move and I think it's something we'll likely continue, but again, I know that puts some pressure on them and they performed very well. And then just to thank the community in general, it takes a lot of people, both in our organization and around our community, to be ready for school and the first week has gone relatively smooth, particularly given all of the things we have. So again, I appreciate your support. A lot of work yet to do, a lot of things we want to continue to work on, particularly at this building and around this campus, but again, very appreciative of that. Couple of quick notes on that, though we did pass out, I think many of you have the foundation cards. I wanted to make sure we'll be touching on this throughout the year in some of the presentations here at the board table about really the environment we want to have for our students and our staff. It goes back to what used to be goal four, now goal three in terms of making sure that our community in terms is a place for learning and how can we support everyone's positive social, emotional, mental health. So we want to continue to focus on that moving forward. It's something that may not work so well for the mental health of our new staff. I do have my PV legs, things when they get up in their roots themselves, we'll be using this as a evaluation tool. We do also have the PV legs coming up. We had a great presentation that morning and again, appreciate all the morning that's been taking place so far.
Board of Education.
I just wanted to echo Scott's thoughts, thank all the staff and everyone for a great start to the school year. Love seeing all the buzz on Twitter from all the teachers and staff and students, so thank you, double them.
I received an email, all of us did, from Jen Bernards, Berner, Barner?
Yep.
About Safeco schools and I thought I'd like to take the training. I went through about 10 of them and I know it's a chore for the teachers, but wow, what a broad selection of skills that can be developed through those trainings. I appreciated them, they were quite good. I've got nothing more to add to that, except that there was five and a half hours of my Saturday gone. I was so intrigued by them, I just wanted to work them all the way through.
I've got a couple new laws this year that have taken effect in the state of Michigan. K-3 reading, new state limits on K-3 reading. We've developed a standard, not a standardization, but a test to measure our reading and in the 2019-2020 school year, kids that don't meet that standard could be potentially held back, so I'm sure our K-3 buildings are on top of that. And the other one, there are new rules about expulsions and suspensions that alleviate a lot of the mandatory expulsions that we used to have. Gives the administration a little more leeway to work with the students for different criteria. So we're hopeful that we don't have to see another expulsion ever again. Hope, I think so. And CPR training, Mr. Raff says it's already started, so we're ahead of curve, everyone in grade seven through 12. So new things this year?
Yeah, and I just kind of want to echo what Brad and Emily said about Clark Construction, Rex and their team. I mean, I was kind of worried myself and so they pulled it together. Also, on Facebook, I was noticing on the first day of school, you get a lot of stuff about transportation, so I thought I was going to, I called Tracy from operations, she's an operation specialist, to get an idea of what kind of goes on behind the scenes. We can practice this in our heads, but once the real, the first day starts, it's kind of a new thing. So Celine Schools does 29 routes a day, we have 4,456 rides per day, that's morning and afternoon, and then we do 2,535 miles per day and I thought, you know, put that in perspective when, you know, in real time, that's a lot. So.
Thank you for keeping our kids safe.
Okay.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? Support. On favor? Aye. Schedule reports, new staff introduction.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the 19 new staff members we've hired this year. After the Dust Cell, we ended up with 19 certified staff, so if you could please come forward to the podium. What we'd like you to do is to introduce yourselves, your name, where you went to school, where you went to school and then where you're teaching and what you're teaching, if you would.
All right, guys, we're good in line. Ben Bellinger, originally from Lansing area, went to Western Virginia University for the past couple of years, I've been now at Chester High School. I'll be at the high school teaching social studies and mainly American history and world history. I'm really excited to be here. Thanks.
Go over there, you go over like Mrs. Rosen, you jump in.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Kirby. I grew up actually right down the road in Manchester, so I'm really excited to be here in Celine and around the neighborhood. I went to Eastern Michigan, I graduated with an elementary education, mathematics, and also a minor in integrative science, so I'm really excited to be here and I'm teaching fourth grade at Heritage.
Hi, Sam Weiner. Originally from Muskegon, Michigan, I went to Mona Shores, go sailors. Went to Central Michigan University. After that, I went to Colorado where I've been living and teaching for the last five years. I'm so glad to be home, finally with your family and friends. I'll be teaching science and social studies at the middle school and thank you guys for having us.
I'm Katie Knebler, I'm from Ann Arbor, Michigan. I went to Michigan State University. I've been teaching third grade for the past 40 years in White Lake and I'm excited to be in Celine now, teaching third grade at Harvest Elementary.
Hi, my name is Corey Gabbala. I grew up in Massachusetts and I'm here now at the Young Adult Program and I earned my bachelor's degree and master's in special ed from Bridgewater State University in Mass, which no one knows when I tell everyone. I believe it.
Hi, I'm Erin McQuaid. I grew up in La Boga, Michigan. I did my undergrad at University of Michigan in English education and then I did my master's work in special education, hearing impaired at Eastern Michigan and I'm also here at the Liberty and Young Adult Program. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jesse Spicer. I'm a 2012 graduate from Spring Harbor University. Studied elementary reading and special education while I was there and I have been teaching kindergarten for the past few years and now I am in fifth grade at Heritage. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nibadi. I'm from Novi, Michigan. I taught for the last three years at Holly High School in Holly, Michigan and now I'm entering my fourth year teaching at Celine High, English 9 and English 11. I'm excited, thank you.
Al Zaire, 2010 graduate, Celine High School. Graduated with undergrad from Spring Harbor University, spent the last two years teaching science at Jackson Northwest High School and happy to be home, I'm teaching science at the high school.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Ellis. I'm a K-12 Celine grad. I went to Bowling Green State University and got a Bachelor of Science in both learning disabilities and cognitive impairments and special education and I'll be teaching at Heritage in the research room.
Hello, I'm Lauren Henson. I graduated from U of M with endorsement in language arts and mathematics and I will be entering my fourth year teaching, fourth grade, and I'm at Heritage teaching fourth grade again, so I'm excited to be here. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Heather Tyson. I grew up in Celine, I graduated from Celine High School in 2012 and then I graduated from Michigan State University in 2016. Spent last year student teaching in Wald Lake and this is my first year of real teaching. I'll be second grade, or I am second grade at Heritage.
Hi, I'm Krela Lasecki. I'm originally from Monroe, well Newport, Michigan, but no one knows Newport, Monroe, Michigan. I went to Michigan State University, I majored in elementary education, specialization in language arts and a minor in T-Sol, or ESL. I'm trying to think what else I'm supposed to say. Oh, this is my first year teaching, I did my student teaching in Detroit Public Schools in fourth grade and this year I am in second grade at Pleasant Ridge. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nikki Gunning. I'm the new health and PE teacher here at the high school. I'm from Holly, Michigan. I got my bachelor's and my master's from the University of Findlay and I just want to thank the administration for this wonderful opportunity to teach here for my first year, so thank you.
My name is Ava Louscher. I'm from Island and this is my 11th year teaching. I'm teaching young guys at Woodland Meadows. I graduated with my bachelor's, I triple minor in early childhood math and science and graduated in 2006 from Eastern and went back to get my master's in early childhood special ed and graduated with that in 2016.
There are three that we're not able to be here tonight. Jesse Markey is teaching special ed in middle school, she's coaching volleyball for us and so she's got a match tonight. Allison Mayer is teaching kindergarten at Harvest and she's actually got a grad class tonight and unfortunately Laura Seaver, who's teaching Spanish at the high school, called me about five minutes before the meeting started and said she got rear-ended on her way here. She's fine, but she was not in the place to get here on time, so I really would like to welcome this group here. I'm really excited about them being here and if anybody wants to take a picture of them, that's why we had a little play.
Camera.
So I think we should establish some kind of scholarship fund for whoever can tweet this stuff, some kind of supply. I see them all going in. Like Carol said.
She said, what about a retirement fund?
Okay, can I recommend a motion to appoint Emily Cohen to serve as the high school super student representative for the Board of Education for the 2017-18 school year?
Support. I'd like to call the high school principal, David Raff, forward to talk a little bit about how we process Emily.
I'm excited about this one, Emily. You know me, I don't give too much emotion. I was hoping that the new staff was here when she got, so they knew who kind of represented her, that was Emily. But Emily is, I've had a chance with Emily since sixth grade closely and she is outstanding in ways. She's been in leadership with Webb for two years in middle school, two years at high school, which means she takes over and helps anybody, doesn't matter who she is, she doesn't have cliques. She's academically strong, so she thinks, you know, obviously how important that is, she plays that, she's an athlete, she's an NHS, she's going to be a great representative to the school board and we need to introduce her, Emily Cohen.
Emily, do you want to say anything?
I mean, no pressure, I don't like anything specific, I'm just excited.
All right, your seat tonight will be, everything? All in favor? Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Welcome.
Emily, we'll get together and we'll do an orientation here in the next few days.
Recommend a motion to appoint Heidi Fannas to serve as the MASV delegate for the 2017-18 school year.
Salute.
Support.
This is when you graciously accept the nomination.
All in favor? Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Heidi.
As I go, Heidi is also presenting at the conference along with Anderson, the partnership between the district and foundation.
I recommend a motion to approve purchase of three wireless microphone systems for the middle school for, from Challenger Technologies in the amount of $6,969.52 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
So this isn't a big bond purchase, but it's one that I think Mr. Bezu will greatly appreciate when it's in. The current system is very old and spotty in its use and actually, Mr. Wissing said that in, I think it's two years, the frequency that it's on will actually be outdated and can't use it anymore. So we're just kind of getting ahead of it a little bit and I think we'll appreciate it.
All in favor? Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I recommend a motion to approve the purchase of Jacobson mower from Jacobson Graham Rivers, Michigan for $69,426.57 and a John Deere gear from Deere and Company, Cary, North Carolina in the amount of $26,610.27 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner.
This continues to be makes equipment that we are purchasing. The, as I think you know, we want to continue to make sure that we can maintain the infrastructure that we invested so heavily in, this will be two key items for that. Mr. Clary had an issue with his son at the soccer game actually in the senior years when he wanted to go to that tonight. Do you have any questions about these two purchases? These are planned purchases.
Other ones that we bought in 2004, they have a lot of Alzheimer's.
To piggyback a little bit on this, obviously we continue to maintain, I have been in front of any of our buildings, certainly we came in here tonight and we'll say, you know, earlier this summer, we allocated funds for kind of the curb appeal. I think that's gone very well, the buildings have not looked better, this is a way for us to continue to maintain the grounds that I think are looking better than ever.
All in favor? Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. I have a recommended motion to approve the purchase of van for the special education department from Bill Christmas Chevrolet in the amount of $20,725 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. Salute.
So when I had prepared this memo, our mechanics had not had a chance to review them, the vans. They have since looked at the vans and have recommended that we purchase the 2017 model. The price is the same for either one, but they felt this would be the best one for us.
All in favor? Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Discussion items, Clark Construction update.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to, for the last two years of being part of the bond program. As everybody is aware, schools open on time, we receive our approvals a week ahead of time, it will allow teachers to move in the week before and as we've always intended, that way the classrooms are prepared and the learning environment is great for the students. I say we're wrapping up the last couple of things and again, on behalf of entire Clark, I want to thank you for all the comments that you made and, you know, the opportunity for the last two years of being here and hopefully continue even further down the road, so. The report's in your package, not going to go through much detail as it is with everything there, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Jump in here, one of the things we met today and we'll meet again, I think in about three weeks' time, again, you know, the one thing, a lot of work was done over the summer and Clark and King Scott were part of that. You know, how I think we can assess a lot of this relationship is what gets done between the Tuesday that we were open and, you know, there was such a push to get everything done, now there are a lot of things we've done and if you've ever had a home construction project, you know how hard it is, once the project has become substantially complete to button everything up. I will tell you, Mark and Brad and the folks at Clark continue to be around, continue to daily, in fact, Mark noted, we haven't talked in a little while, is everything okay? We're continuing to discuss those issues and try to work a solution on the issues that are still out there, so again, that, and continue to be happy with their ability to work with us on those things. So we're going to, we're set down, we're continuing to come up with new things, right? A lot of things that we're talking about now are not part of the bond, we're not part of the bond and so it's important for us to interface as we transition from what type of work we had as part of the bond and what kind of little things that we want to make sure get done to make sure that we continue to have the environment we want for our students, so very appreciative of that. Continue.
Thank you very much. As Mr. Gray mentioned, having spent several hours on Labor Day together with that and like you said, we hadn't spoken for three days and it was a little different from the first time in the last six months, so.
It's not you, it's me.
So, Mark, thank you for keeping us updated throughout all of this. You've been very good and all of that.
Thank you very much. We've got a great staff that helps me out in regards to, again, as I said, the Celine Board has been great, administration's been great to work with and been a great, I'll say, been a hard three months, but it's been an enjoyable three months and I was a little guy of all, everybody's face of the appreciation of the work that was accomplished over the summer to improve, I'll say, ultimately to improve the environment for the children and that's ultimately, that's all we're sired for.
Pretty good weather here again. Do you have to interrupt?
Yes, we were very fortunate again. As I say, we learned last year in a positive way that when rain comes this way, in most cases it goes around us, although the last week that didn't provide that, but we were very fortunate again this summer, just like last summer, that the weather really helped us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance committee update?
Yes, the finance committee met last night, 5:00 and appreciate Assistant Superintendent Warner briefing us on bonded updates, we want our capital project updates, the open property sale updates and sinking fund and the rack village proposal that's coming up. Janice, anything you want to add on that?
No, I think you covered it all.
Thank you.
Policy board committee update?
So policy, we haven't met throughout summer. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, the 19th, we'll be from today and we'll start back up with the policy manual on section 5,000. Read them.
Done.
Refresh now.
Yeah. I committed all to memory.
We're going to quiz you.
Five thousand.
Okay, 5,000, yeah.
Curriculum update.
I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Lodge, I think, which Lodge I think about 40 hours ago, it's eight years we've been here. But it's an opportunity for us, this is in discussions and most of these cases, but again, I encourage the board to have questions about where we're going as a district, you know, I have a lot of what we've been doing and we want some of you to start this school year.
Okay, thanks very much. And Kurt's going to help by clicking on some of the links that are connected to this presentation. Yeah, so it's my pleasure to be able to talk about curriculum update and really it's important that we talk about professional development or PD together with curriculum because as the curriculum evolves and changes, our professional development model needs to evolve with that as well. So we're going to kind of take you through a course of where we're at now and where we're going. As you know, we've been really focused on the learner profile. Some people call this a graduate profile. Since we're saying that these are important skills that students need by the time they graduate high school to connect in the real world and not just prepared for college, but for whatever. And we largely base a lot of this on, I know if you saw the NPR interview that Scott had the other day, he was touching on the fact that we look at this Forbes list in 2015, looked at over 275 major employers and asked, what are the top 10 skills that people feel are important that graduates have to be successful in the workforce? And the vast majority of them fit inside this learner profile. Now, that doesn't mean that content and teaching content is not important in our district, we're still very focused on that, but we want to do both. We want to be able to teach content, make sure kids have all that base knowledge, make sure that we're still scoring in a very strong fashion and with standardized assessments and be able to integrate these skills inside the lessons that our teachers are teaching throughout the year. We are also connected with many, many districts in the United States and around the world that also believe that this work is important. One of the organizations that we're connected with is Ed Leader 21, we brought them up before. They're going to have a conference very soon in October that a number of us are attending and one of the things they ask for all the districts to do is those that have these graduate profiles, put together a little 30-second snapshot on what are the important elements of it and Chase helped us do that, which was great, so we have a 30-second little video we want to show, so Kurt can click on profile of a graduate and then hold up the microphone for our.
The Celine Area Schools profile of a graduate is designed around a compass, which is our guide on the path to future focused learning. We focus on the following eight student attributes. Positive communicator, financially and digitally literate, globally connected, motivated and self-directed, collaborative leader, ethical and responsible citizen, creative innovator, and complex thinker and problem solver. Welcome to the Celine Area Schools journey.
And that had to be 30 seconds or less, so that was tricky to get that done. All right, so who can guess who's the mystery person?
Molly Garcia.
Oh boy, yeah, Molly Garcia, she's the voice. Anyway, so we want to know that we're not doing this work alone.
he was touching on the fact that we look at this Forbes list in 2015, looked at over 275 major employers, and asked, "What are the top ten skills that people feel are important that graduates have to be successful in the workforce?" And the vast majority of them fit inside this learner profile. Now, that doesn't mean that content and teaching content is not important in our district. We're still very focused on that. But we want to do both. We want to be able to teach content, make sure kids have all that base knowledge, make sure that we're still scoring in a very strong fashion with standardized assessments, and be able to integrate these skills inside the lessons that our teachers are teaching throughout the year. We are also connected with many, many districts in the United States and around the world that also believe that this work is important. One of the organizations that we're connected with is EdLeader 21. We brought them up before. They're going to have a conference very soon in October that a number of us are attending. And one of the things they ask for all the districts to do is those that have these graduate profiles, put together a little thirty-second snapshot on what are the important elements of it. And Chase helped us do that, which was great. So, we have a thirty-second little video we want to show. So, Kurt can click on Profile of a Graduate and then hold up the microphone for our.
The Celine Area Schools Profile of a Graduate is designed around a compass, which is our guide on the path to future-focused learning. We focus on the following eight student attributes. Positive communicator. Financially and digitally literate. Globally connected. Motivated and self-directed. Collaborative leader. Ethical and responsible citizen. Creative innovator. And complex thinker and problem solver. Welcome to the Celine Area Schools journey.
And that had to be thirty seconds or less. So, that was tricky to get that done. All right, so who can guess who's the mystery person? Oh, boy, right, yeah. Molly Garcia. She's the voice. Anyway, so we want to know that we're not doing this work alone. We are connected to a network of other organizations that also feel that this is very, very important as we move down this path together, which is great because then we share ideas with each other. So, why do we move in this direction? What kind of data do we have that would support that our students feel that we should also be doing more to move in this direction? So, recently, we've been exploring survey data from K-12 Insight. I think many of you know that that's our survey organization that has really been gathering data, not only for the community, but also from our students. And for the last two years at the middle school and high school, there's one question that really stands out that we are trying to dive into further. And that is that really, not all students have these equitable opportunities to engage in learning that's connected to the learner profile. And we recognize this because only forty-one percent of our students report that lessons reflect real-life experiences in the middle and high school. Now, to put that in perspective, these are students that are also reporting ninety-eight percent really like their teachers, feel like they have great opportunities in school. So, they're really largely very positive about everything that's going on in the school district. But this particular question stood out to say, "Hey, this is an area we need to dive in deeper." If we have, you know, over fifty percent of our students not feeling like there's a connection to their real life, then what, then we need to dive into that further and develop some focus groups with our students to find out, well, why is that the case? So, with that said, we are now moving in a direction to help support that learner profile. And in another slide down the road here, I'm going to get back to that survey. We're going to talk more about that. So, two major focus points for professional development this year are developing student will statements centered around the eight student attributes in the learner profile. Those were the eight that Molly just read off in that short video. We're also looking at more personalized professional development for our staff. We want staff to go through meaningful professional development that actually is relevant to their position, whatever it may be. And so, we're embarking in something called microcredentia, which we'll touch on next. So, to get to the, to the student will statements, and Kurt, if you can click on that first one. So, over the course of the last year, these are a little hard to read, but I'll give you the gist of them, that we have the eight student will, we have student will statements associated with our student attribute. So, we're just going to focus on one of them right now, and that's positive communicator. And the staff developed four statements for each of these, saying, "These are specific things we want students to do when they graduate." And so, we're going to be working on those at all at different levels throughout and integrated through the lessons. So, this particular one, positive communicator, students will communicate effectively through a variety of tools, digital, verbal, written, specific to their intended audience. So, I want to focus in on that one. We, as a result of positive communicator, said, "Well, who can help us with that?" And we brought in for one of our first professional development days, Eric Palmer. And if you look at your little PV legs bookmark, the point of this is that we need students that are better at speaking and communicating. And Eric points out that seventy-five percent of skills you need when it comes to communication are verbal. And you need to be good at speaking to be successful in life. And that yet, it's the least taught language art. If you think about it, we spend a lot of time teaching reading and writing, but not a lot of time teaching kids how to be really good presenters and speaking to others. So, a focus this year is this positive communicator area. And we started that work on August thirtieth at our first professional development day. And we were continuing this work throughout the school year where we're having teachers connect, how are they going to integrate these student will statements? And Kurt, if you can back up to the, back to the slide and click on the associated lessons. Here's an example from third grade. So, third grade, the other day at the first professional development, professional development day, looked at these student will statements and are associating lessons that they are already working on and determining how can they better integrate positive communication skills inside their lessons. And if you scroll down a little bit, Kurt, we're going to see that they're starting to say, "Well, how are we going to integrate some of the things?" Keep going a little bit further down, right about in here. These are some of the things associated with the Eric Palmer work. And so, we're excited about this direction of saying, not only do we have student will statements, but now we have our teaching staff saying, "How are we going to connect those inside the lessons that we already teach and make them better?" Because we don't want our teachers to think that this is a whole different curriculum. This needs to be integrated into the lessons that are already being taught in the school district. Okay, so if we go back to the regular presentation. So, then we want to talk about microcredentia. And this is another PD opportunity this year. We're having teachers learn about blended learning opportunities. In short, teachers will pick a small group, three to five people, and go through a ten-hour blended learning opportunity. And what that means is they're taking some professional development online. They're learning about an area that they're interested in. They're applying it in their classroom, and then they're reflecting on it. One of the reasons we want to do this is because we're also looking at blended learning opportunities for our students, in particular at the high school level, as that is really important moving forward. Colleges and universities are starting to reflect that there is an element of using online resources and face-to-face resources to really make a more powerful learning experience. So, we have a number of courses, if you can click on that, Kurt, to give an example, where courses have been created by our teaching and administrative staff, and teachers are going to be signing up for those throughout the year as part of their professional development model. We feel like it's important that we're modeling, as professionals, some of the things we're asking for our students to do moving forward. And so, that's what this model is really about. And this list is nineteen different opportunities that they could select, and we're asking them to choose one for this year. Okay, so we jump back to the presentation.
Is that online learning or is someone coming into?
It's, it's online learning. Well, it's a blend because what happens is the small group of teachers will go through some learning online, watch videos, learn from different resources. Then they get together and discuss it and debate about how are they going to integrate that into their classroom activity? They apply it in the classroom. Then they report out about it inside the learning portal, and then they reflect on it. So, it's that practice of learn, apply, reflect. So, we talked about blended learning and what that means. We want to go visit other districts so we can learn about that. And Huntley High School is one that we're going to. We're to have a site visit on October eighteenth with a number of high school teachers and administrators where we're going to go look at this model. They've been featured in CNN as having a very interesting and powerful model in that what happens there is they have almost all of their teachers offering, for example, English nine course. They would offer it online in a blended learning format, and then also offer it face-to-face in a more traditional model, so that it's giving students options. And what a blended learning model would look like is that potentially, two days a week, the students are meeting with the teacher face-to-face to talk about issues and whatnot going on inside the class. Three days a week, the students are working outside of class, looking to learn more and apply the knowledge. And then when those students are three days not meeting with the teacher, it gives the teacher time to meet with small cohorts of students in that class to really personalize the learning. So, they wouldn't always have, you know, thirty students in the class at that same time. So, that's a model that they are implementing, and we want to go take a look at that to see how that could translate into the possible blended learning classes at the high school in 2018 and 19. This all ties together with our social, emotional, and mental fitness card. So, if you take a look at the one, these are finalized. And we've recognized with our wellness committee that these are important attributes that we make sure we are supporting on a daily basis with our students. And so, these have now been distributed to our teaching staff, and the principals and assistant principals are having methods of getting these cards out to the community and integrating them into what we do on a regular basis. For example, at the elementary schools, we have community meetings, and they are living by many of the foundations that are established here in these positive, social, emotional, and mental fitness cards. On the back of the card, it gives some suggestions upon which adults can do to help students with this positive, social, emotional, and mental fitness. And we want to use this as a guide throughout the year to really support our students because if we don't have mentally fit students, it's going to be hard for them to embark on any of these new learning experiences. So, we want to make sure we don't lose sight of this, this element. Finally, data and assessment. How are we going to see if this is connecting with our kids and we're having an impact? So, we are organizing through K-12 Insight focus groups. And we're going to begin this on November second. We're going to have high school and middle school focus groups. We're looking at a diverse group of students, and we're going to be talking to them. I wouldn't say we, we're having K through twelve do it because we want that neutral party, we're experts in developing surveys, to work with the group of students to talk about, "Well, how are these things important for instruction? And how will they be measured by our students?" Because we often talk about, "Well, what do we think our teaching staff wants? Or we as administrators want, or what our parents want?" But we really need to get back to our students and say, "Hey, look, we're developing these eight student attributes. Why do you think as students that these are important? Are these being taught in your classes? How are your classes being taught? Are they engaging?" All of those things. So, we're going to really get down to the brass tacks of that with these student focus groups, with the creation of a more targeted survey in the spring, this spring of 2018 to distribute to all our middle school and high school students, and then eventually translate down to our elementary students as well. So, that's a lot, but that's talking about the direction of the district, and we wanted to share that with you tonight. So, questions?
So, we, first of all, these cards are fantastic. Who gets these?
We ordered enough of those to distribute to our staff, everyone on our staff, and for parents at open houses and community events such as that. So, they really aren't targeted to be given to the students themselves. They're more for our adults to help live those foundations. So, we ordered around five thousand of them. So, it should cover almost all of our parent, our parent base and our staff.
I was wondering about parents.
They're not very expensive, so we could order more. We felt we should. Yeah, but we want it to be more on a authentic basis. In other words, we don't want at a community meeting, Betty Rosenleach, you're standing up and, you know, just reading the card. For example, they might focus on one of those areas, being empathetic. And they might read a story to students and talk about what does empathy mean? And how is that a really good attribute to have with, with students versus just, "Hey, we want to live by these. We got to do that stuff on a regular basis." I know at Hornet Hour at the high school, we are working on potentially integrating some of those areas inside that as well. And so, you know, it's a work in process. Or Hornet Time. What did I say? Hornet Hour? Oh, sorry, sorry. Hornet Time. Right, okay. Totally different. Sorry. Anyway. So, yeah. Other questions that we have left?
One of the things I heard a lot of when we talk about this learner profile, I think it's easy to people to say, "Well, it's just going to be, these are just..." There is a lot of detailed thought and intentional work being done, you know, kind of layered underneath of that compass in order to drive instruction. So, I think it's one of the things I want to make sure the board is aware and sort of help with, and our community is aware that there is a lot of work being done to drive in and really define those attributes in meaningful ways so that our staff have the tools, resources necessary to teach those skills and to hopefully allow our students to access those skills in meaningful ways. So, thank you, Steve.
One other thing I did want to add that I forgot to mention is about performance assessment. Today, at the high school, we had a good conversation with the executive council about, "Do we need to look differently at how we're delivering final exams?" For example, if we feel like PV legs, which is, you know, a great method on having students learn how to be better speakers, if that's a really important part of a final, why couldn't we have for two weeks leading up for the final, students doing presentations and practicing speaking skills? And that's part of their final grade, even though on the actual final exam day, there might be another element of the final giving. In other words, we have to start being more flexible because performance assessment is a really important way to actually measure these kind of things, more so than any standardized test could. Because it's tricky. This, this, this type of thing is not the easiest thing to measure in traditional measures. You can't just give a hundred and twenty-question multiple-choice test and somehow figure out, "Does that mean they're a really good communicator?" Or any of those other attributes. So, we do need to think differently on how we assess, and we're, we're working on that.
I have a question about the mental health cards. Is it more geared towards the staff and the parents, or is that for them to help them, the students?
Yeah, it's, it's that. It's written as, and I'll, I'll just read you some examples. I'll give you a couple of examples on the back. So, these areas, like students should accept themselves, embrace the struggle and so forth, accept themselves. Ways to do that, inquire about a student's interests or strengths. Celebrate student accomplishments, both academic and social. Understand that mistakes are okay to make. In other words, parents should be talking to kids about that. Or teachers should be talking to students about that. So, they are really geared more towards methods of supporting students on a regular basis. But they're really not written in a student perspective, so to speak. It's a good question.
How are we communicating with the parents? What are these are for?
What we're going to be doing is having principals and assistant principals at the building levels communicating that we're going to go on a little social media blitz here with these as well, coming up soon, once we get all that organized to really impress upon the importance of it.
Steve, I, I wrote down when you talked about the forty-one percent real-life relevance, and then you went out and talked about the staff and the student will statements. And I was getting concerned in that, with sort of this point. And at the end, you said that you had brought the kids in at the end, you know, and then what you just said sort of answered my question. And I appreciate when you talk about the exams and you talk about that. Kids have some sort of input into it because if I go into a room and I have student will statements, they don't care, you know. So, it's, I appreciate that you're giving them the input into this and giving them some ownership of it. So, with that forty-one percent operating as well as, we can start seeing that number go up because as you get ownership, you know, as everybody here knows, when they, when they, when they take ownership, they're going to start buying in. They're going to start understanding that I have an ownership statement in this. I'm part of this, and it becomes part of the life and our experience. So, I appreciate that you're already starting to do that to eliminate that forty-one percent.
Right, because if students say, "Hey, these, these particular student will statements, some of them don't resonate at all, and really, it shouldn't be important," then we would have to not, not be implementing it.
I appreciate that.
And we're going to talk more about this later. We'll talk a lot about that at a conference call. We are doing focus groups in November eighth with middle school students and high school students to really get deeper because trying to assess what does it look like and understand in meaningful ways. I think that we want to have kind of a research-based, more so than anecdotal information. So, we're looking at those methodologies to really, once we start to say, "This is what we want," we need to come up with fairly sophisticated ways to measure that. Unfortunately, because we're not alone on this path, but there are others with us, we almost need to build a little bit ourselves as opposed to be able to pull some off-the-shelf assessments, so.
When we get off those focus groups, Brad, Emily, David, and the other assistant principals at the high school, they need to pick a very diverse group to be in this focus group because we don't want only, you know, kids that are in leadership position. We want students that are in leadership positions, some that are struggling with school, some that are only involved in athletics. I mean, we need a diverse group to really speak for what's happening at the high school and what's happening at the middle school.
So, as a parent with a kid, parents teach, though. Are we thinking at some point bringing it in there because we've noticed that the curriculum changing and all the types of kids are having, knowing inside with the kids in fourth and fifth grade? So, from, as a parent, I think it would help for them to start learning some of those behaviors before they get into middle school.
Right.
The way they all just don't appear.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, yeah. So, the cards and the implementation of all this are throughout the district, K through twelve. The focus groups start at the middle school and high school, but we do want to translate that down to the elementary level to be able to have some voice there. It just would look a little different, and we, and we, that's a step later on down the road.
Thank you. I have written in motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of August eighth, 2017. B, approval of the Special Board of Education Retreat Meeting Minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty-second, 2017. C, approval of the Special Board Finance Committee Meeting Minutes of August seventh, 2017. D, approval of payment of general fund account payable of September twelfth, 2017, in the amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. E, approval of payment of bond fund account payable of September twelfth, 2017, in the amount of three million, five hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-six cents. F, receiving file September Curriculum Finance and Human Resource Report. G, receiving file, 2017, 2018 student handbooks estimated by Superintendent Grayden. H, approval of early graduation request estimated by Superintendent Grayden. I, approval of the following field trip estimated by Superintendent Grayden. Capstone trip to Haiti on November twenty-sixth through December second, 2017. Capstone trip to Haiti on April eighth through fourteenth, 2018. Service trip to Nicaragua on March tenth through seventeenth, 2018. Celine High School Choir Fall Retreat in Holly, Michigan on September twenty-ninth through October first, 2017. In G, receiving file memorandum from Assistant Superintendent Ellis confirming that the following individuals have successfully completed in their probationary period as defined by Teacher Tenure Act four of nineteen thirty-seven. Natasha Boizel, Madeline Clark, Lindsay Gunther, Sarah Patton, Teresa Redding, Laura Shoemaker, Kristen Tarek, Nicole Tucci, Joe Welton, and Andrea White.
And it's, honestly, it's somewhat of a philosophical statement that they made, but it has changed some of the parameters around, particularly an expulsion, if you can. We want to make sure that the voice of the student and mitigating factors or other issues associated with that are heard.
That's all.
That being said.
You should try to test.
Okay. Next Board of Education meeting will be held on September 26th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in Liberty Media Center. We will enter in closed session. I recommend a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 7:22. Put the intent to reopen session at 7:00 AM for the purpose of purchase or lease properties. Vote. This will be a roll call vote. For Reverend Austin, aye. Secretary Dale, aye. Pastor Dean Holland, aye. Vice President, aye. Pastor Dean Bay, aye. Pastor Dean Davis, aye. Pastor Dean Warren, aye.